September 20th, the property secretary is going to start off the zoning board appeals meeting with the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To God, and to the mercy that is remembered, and to the love of our fathers and daughters, and to the nation of your God, and to his people, who live in the nation of Israel.
The court's with mass, general law, chapter 38, section 20 F. This meeting is being recorded. The first petition of the, the first hearing of the night is, um, let me read the administrative appeal from, from the cease and desist order of the building commission or dated July 21/23, that the screening of soils is a form of manufacturing not allowed in a residential agricultural district in violation of zoning by law, article 4, section 4.1. Subway, this property is located at 17 Sodom Road, Westport, Mass. And it's shown on assessors map, 61 lots, 20 on R and 21A, A dash zero. Hearing this, uh, appeal will be, uh, let me see. Cynthia Kozekowicz, Barbara Ponelolo, myself, Roger Menard, Constance Ghee, and Ray Elias. And since it's an administrative appeal, it requires a super majority of four votes on five. The way this hearing will be conducted is I'll have the petitioner or petition representative come in front of us and provide whatever information they think it's pertinent. At that point then, the, the board will ask questions to the petitioner. Once the board has completed discussions with the petition, then it'll open it up to the general public. After which case then, assuming that there, that we do not continue for whatever reason, then we will close the hearing and the board will make a determination. So petition is representative?
Good evening, Mr.
Before you even, yeah, I'm going to start off with what prompted this is a letter from Ralph Souza, the zoning enforcement officer. After review of the Westport zoning bylaws, article 4.1, I've determined that the property in question is a pre-existing non-conforming commercial business in a residential agricultural district which has operated since 1985. It is my understanding that you have soils permit from the conservation permit which allows you to stockpile and transfer only soils. I have received numerous complaints with regard to the screening of soil from an butter. It is my opinion that the screening of soils as a form of manufacturing is not allowed in a residential agricultural district, and you must cease and desist that portion of the activity. That's, and that is the reason why you are here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, attorney Thomas Killorn representing the applicant with me is Dave Raposo from JR Construction, JR and Sons Construction, Inc. And the property owner is here as well, Mary Raposo. I do have a void that shows the property. Is there a particular area you would like that?
Right, right there. It's good. You can see that from there, correct?
And would the board let me present from here?
Yes.
Sir. I do have copies as well of both, will be put up on the easel that I can hand out to the board and make certain the record. As the chairman indicated, we're before the board this evening as a result of administrative appeal from a cease and desist letter received from the building inspector. Just by way of background on this property, it's located at 17 Sodom Road in Westport, Massachusetts, and 17 Sodom Road, Westport, Massachusetts. It's approximately 23 acres in size. Since approximately 1985, the property has been utilized by JR and Sons Construction, Inc. as a quote unquote yard. Predominantly, they park their construction vehicles there and they stockpile materials that they utilize in their business. Their business is predominantly an asphalting and excavating business. Throughout the year, depending upon the differing types of jobs that they have, they will bring in materials from different job sites that they have. A large part, it's, it's a lot of asphalt type material, things, parking lots, roadways that they may have dug up. And those are stockpiled at the property. They do have a stockpile permit and they've, in effect today, and they've had one for, I know I've seen records going back to, I think, 2010 or so.
2009, according to the girl at the office this morning.
I stand corrected, 2009. So they have a stockpile permit and, and again, they do have an active one. It was just renewed in July of 2023. And about once or twice per year, um, the construction company hires the services of AJ Potter, and Mr. Potter is, is here in attendance tonight, and I believe can attest to what I'm going to be representing to the board. They hire the services of AJ Potter, who goes out to the site and they grind and process these asphalt piles that, that they accumulate throughout the year. And then those asphalt piles, after they've been ground down, are reutilized, recycled, so to speak, by JR and Sons Construction at various job sites that they have. I think the important thing for this board to recognize, and I think it's been recognized by the building inspector in a cease and desist letter, is that this has been a pre-existing non-conforming use that's been going on since the mid 1980s. So we're looking at a good 35-plus years or so. The building inspector does, may take issue in his letter with this screening, which is all part of the grinding process of these asphalt piles. But I would certainly suggest to this board that that has been part and parcel to JR and Sons Construction business for the entirety of the time that they have been there. And again, that's the reason why we asked Mr. Potter to be present tonight in case the board wanted to hear directly from him, so he could attest to the fact that they have been going out to the site and engaging in this practice on behalf of JR and Sons for the past 35-plus years or so. We also have in attendance a number of butters, which I believe are going to speak out in favor of JR and Sons and the business that they operate there. And these are butters that immediately about the property or across the street on Sodom Road, many of which are going to attest to the fact that, that they are not disturbed by the operation that has gone on there for the past 35 years. And I think at least one individual is going to be able to testify to the fact that, yes, this crushing component of the operation has been going on, and that individual, I think it's Joseph Carvallo, would be, I'm sorry, Carvallo, excuse me. Joseph Carvallo, who lives across the street on Sodom Road, and I believe has been at his residence since 1978. He can certainly correct me.
Can I stop you just there for a second?
Certainly.
Well, I certainly want to hear from everybody, but whether they like it or don't like it is totally irrelevant. The issue here is a matter of law. Did you in fact abide by, because, because this is an administrative appeal, there are only two, two things we can do. We can either say that Ralph was correct in how we interpreted the zoning bylaws, in which case then your appeal is rejected.
Right.
Or we can look at that and say, no, Ralph, the zoning enforcement officer, was incorrect in how we interpreted the law, in which case your appeal is valid. So, and again, I don't want to stop people from coming up. I want to hear about this, but saying that you're, that you're okay with it has got, has got nothing valid as far as determining whether or not we interpreted the law correctly.
And I would wholeheartedly agree with you, Mr. Chairman, in terms of what this board is charged with doing tonight. And I would agree with you that whether somebody says they like it or don't like it doesn't necessarily carry the day at all. And I respect that that's how this board is going to approach this. I've, do this in many different communities, and sometimes these things do turn into, I like it, I don't like it. But I do think that Mr. Potter is able to provide relevant evidence, though, in terms of the amount of time or length of time that this crushing has been a component of the JR and Sons Construction business. And I think that Mr. Carvallo can also speak to that as well, because he's seen that operation, that component of the operation going on for the past 35 years or so, since the mid to late 1980s. So respectfully, what we're, we're seeking from this board is a determination that this crushing slash screening component of JR and Sons is something that is part and parcel to their business, something that has gone on as a pre-existing non-conforming use since the business has been in operation since the mid 1980s. And so we would ask for this board, I don't know what terminology this, this board uses, but effectively overrule a determination that was made by the zoning enforcement officer in this particular instance. And just, it, because the board just wants to get a little bit of an oversight as to the property itself, just so you can familiarize yourself with it. Over here on the right-hand side of, yes, your right-hand side is 177, this is Sodom Road here. This is the entrance into the property. Again, it's 23 acres and goes considerably back to the, to the rear of the property. There are houses here that are owned by Mr. Raposo and his mother. There is existing office trailer building here. The main stockpiling area is in this area here. It's heavily vegetated around the property. You can see the nearest residence appears to be about 230 feet away. And it's where this stockpile area is, is generally where the crushing will take place. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it'll be in this area here. Just again, I think this is just good for orientation for the board's purposes.
So you're essentially running a business from here?
That is correct.
Now, my question to Ralph is, why didn't you, your cease and desist, tell them to cease and desist the entire business, since that's a residential area and businesses are not allowed in a residential area?
It's been doing it more than 10 years.
But zoning, but he's been doing it after?
Statute of limitations is over after 10 years.
Okay, okay.
So when asked the manufacturing piece of it.
Okay. Spike?
So I, I think what, what the zoning enforcement officer is referring to is 48, section 6, which if there is a, a use that's been going on that's non-compliant, once the 10-year period expires, then quote unquote statute of limitations expires in terms of enforcing on it. But the screening, crushing, we, Mr. Raposo, when he told me about it, referred to it more as a recycling, but whether you call it recycling, manufacturing, whatever you call it, has been a consistent component of the business for the entire time that it's been there.
And Ralph, the reason for, for?
Complaint for former butters.
And it's because they are, they are now not just storing things, but they are?
They are processing.
Processing something.
Turning, the turning product A and the product B.
Right.
Former manufacturing.
That's a form of manufacturing.
Former manufacturing.
And that's not allowed by?
That's not allowed by zone.
But they're not, they're not doing that 52 weeks a year, right? They're only doing that?
That's what they're told.
10 days or?
So, so typically, at most, they would do it about two weeks per year. So I think at a max, it'd be about 10 days. Oftentimes, it's not uncommon for them to accomplish it all within one week.
Right.
It, it really depends on need, but historically, they've never done it more than two weeks.
But whether you do it one day or 365 days, it's either right or wrong.
I, I don't disagree with you. Again, I, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, right, this is a business use that's going on in a residential slash agricultural zone in town. But because of the fact that it has been going on for the length of time that it's been going on, including the processing of the asphalt piles, our, our strong suggestion to this board is that it should be allowed at this point.
Can I ask Ralph, with, what were the specific complaints? It is a noise problem, a?
Smell?
Dirt in the air problem?
The noise.
Noise problem?
The machinery processing it.
Okay.
One product goes through the machine, noise as it's processing, and then shoot it off.
Okay.
Was there a decibel reading for the noise?
Uh, no, I don't use the meter because I had another incident in Westport where I was told I'd have to be trained to run that meter.
Right.
And it has to be done by a certain time or it would be all thrown out.
You have to be calibrated and?
So I'd have to, my, I would have to hire somebody to do that. Now, I'm, I'm fine just to hire anybody to sit on something.
So there's no particular, um, dust or?
That, that wasn't the complaint about it.
Nothing.
The complaint was the noise. The noise that the processing makes.
Okay.
And it's really a matter of zoning doesn't allow manufacturing, and if they're doing what is perceived as manufacturing, then it's not allowed. And it's really in how you perceive what they're doing.
Correct. And, and in Ralph's letter, he, he says that it's, in his opinion, that it's manufacturing. I looked up the terminology for manufacturing and recycling, and they're two different animals. They are two different animals. And I, I, I was hoping our attorney was going to be here also, because this becomes questionable at some point, that, at one point, we've discussed here at this board on other hearings, that it came up recently to?
No, don't need to stand up.
If it's not in our zoning requirements, it's not, it's not, it's allowed. Well, recycling is nowhere in our zoning, anyway. I looked through everything we had today. I couldn't find it. And I said to myself, well, he's taking, he's not, he's not making tar there, he's bringing in tar chunks and making something else out that goes back out. At a retail operation, almost. Am I too far off, Mr. Raposo?
Then that is pretty much the definition of manufacturing.
Right.
Yeah, but he's not doing that. He's, it's there. He's, he's recycling it and sending it back out. He's not manufacturing pots there.
He's taking something?
Jerry, at one point brought up the fact, when we had an electrician on Main Road, well, are you going to be manufacturing electrical items there? No, I'm just taking boxes and putting them together. It's similar to what he's doing here, in my opinion. Ralph has this, and I have mine.
Can I read the definition of manufacturing from our zoning bylaws, because that's what we have to go by? Is to bring something into forming, shaking, or combining or altering materials.
In this case?
So it's altering.
It's altering.
And, and the only time it talks about earth and, it also talks about earth and mining. And we're not doing either one of those things. We're not digging up the earth to get these things. We're doing it off-site to bring it there to recycle.
Now, the question is, we had said, I remember that, that was early on in my tenure here, that he's only putting parts together, which would be combining. And isn't there, is there, but in that instance, I don't even know if it was that, it was that, it was a, it was some sort of exception, if you lived in the property in which you had your business, ran your business out on, you were able?
Same thing, it was non-con, it was a non-conforming business already there.
Right. You were able to, as long as you lived there, you had your sort of like contractor exception, if what Jerry said. I don't really recall the, the details there. And since Mr. Raposo does live on the property, I, I wonder if there's a similar exception.
I have, I know of, but.
Well, I, a weird department, we can discuss all.
No, no, no. Have you got more that you want to?
No, I, I just really took, to the point, to the debate as to whether we have recycling or manufacturing. I, I would suggest to this board that it's, it's immaterial as to whether you want to call it manufacturing or you want to call it recycling in this particular instance. I think the question is, is has it been going on at the site, just like the rest of the business component, has it been going on for these past 35 years? And again, I would suggest to this board that it clearly has, based on certainly what Mr. Raposo could represent, but that's why we brought in some outside individuals to be able to confirm to this board that it has in fact been going on there for these past 35 years since the business has been in existence. And if that is in fact the case, then it should be treated no different than the remainder of Mr. Raposo's business. This is what has been going on there for 35 years.
So is that be Mr. Potter or someone else?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to comment before we bring up anybody else. I looked at the GIS maps from 2009, 2012, 2022, and they all show construction site activities, stockpiling, those kinds of things going on. I can't view if there was crushing going on, I can't tell that, but the site shows that it was used in that fashion. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I did talk about the table of use. It's recycling is nowhere in there, and I consider this recycling and not manufacturing.
But anything that's not stated in the bylaws is?
It's, it's approved.
It's not allowed.
No, it's not allowed.
Not allowed.
No, it's, it's allowed if it's not said, if it's not allowed.
Last week, last meeting.
If it's not, if it's not, if it's not listed in the use table, then you can't do it.
That's very valid.
That's, that's the?
That's exactly?
That's exactly what it says.
What we did three weeks ago.
Yeah. But Ralph, if, if they can prove that they've been doing this for more than 10 years, then would you consider that to be grandfathered in?
Are existed, considered to be pre-existing or performance.
Okay. Do we have somebody that can verify that?
Mr. Potter?
Glenn Potter, AJ Potter and Sons. I can testify to the fact that we've been crushing there for many years, and the activity, depending on how much material comes in, we, normally it's with two weeks each year, but it's not two weeks entirely, it's six months, we come in and crush, and it's maybe six months more, depending on how active this incoming material is. And we've been doing this at least since probably 19, 1990, 88, I don't know, about 85 or somewhere in that time, for, it's been more than 10 years.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a neighbor here that's with Mr. Crushing Equipment that's been coming in over the years.
Okay, when I open it up to the rest of the floor, we'll?
I, I just, if you wanted somebody to piggyback on what Mr. Potter had to say, but obviously I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. If you, if you want to speak, come to the microphone, state your name and address. I was going to say make it short, but now I know better.
Give me the benefit of the doubt, will you, Mr. Chair? Tony Viera, A. Kelly Avenue. I would just like to point out that in reading this, it talks about screening soils and considering screening soils to be manufacturing. I guess I'm guilty and probably every farmer is in town and every gardener is in town and every compost, we all do composting in town for various areas. We sell the product after, we change it to some degree. It's part of what we do in agriculture, and this is a residential agricultural area. I think there's a history of what's been done here and respectfully with the community to try to make sure that it's not disturbing to the folks. People move in, people move on, but it is a right to farm community. Thank you.
I'm impressed, Tony. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Joe Carvallo, 28, Sodom Road. I live directly across from 29, diagonally from 17.
Okay.
And in all the years I've been there, I've never, I'm a plumbing contractor, small business, and it's never came to me where I thought they were infringing on my right or where I was annoyed by what was going on, you know? And it's a way for him to recycle, I feel that it's a good thing, you know, especially the way we're all into recycling nowadays. I have no complaints about it, so I just want to say that I'm in favor, whether, I know it doesn't mean anything to anyone, but I'm okay. Thank you.
Now, you say there was somebody else who can testify to their?
It was actually Mr. Carvallo.
Mr. Carvallo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've been there since 1977. The crushing has been going on for a long time, and it happens probably?
By a long time, three years, five years, 20 years, 173 years?
Yeah, I would say over 15 after that. My, my memory gets a little foggy.
Okay.
But, uh, no, the, I think the biggest thing and the hottest thing for them to do is when they bring that equipment in because it's so huge. But other than that, I have no qualms. It's in the back, you know, and it's a pretty good process. It's not like they're doing it to me, because I'm up around 6 o'clock. I've never heard that machine ever run before 8 o'clock at all. You know, and before probably 4 o'clock, it's probably off. And it's not like it's five days straight sometimes, you know, the weather has something to do with it, so the machine will sit there a little longer. But other than that, you know, it's a way of doing business.
Okay, thank you.
Is that accurate, Mr. Raposo? Wouldn't start before 8:00? And what time would that cease in the daytime?
Usually right around, like I said, around 8:00, the time they get everything greased and ready to go, around 8:00. And usually right around 4:00, 5:00 the latest done.
Okay.
And very rare on a Saturday, just in case we've got to finish up the pile or something. And that's, like I said, twice a year, if that.
Thank you.
And name and address?
My name's Ed Tebow, 41 Sodom Road. I get a clear shot from my deck. I've been there since 2009.
Okay.
As far as I can remember, Mr. Potter's been in there every year.
Okay.
I see his operation. It's not ratty stuff, it's not abnormal, noises and clanking and banking. The guy keeps good equipment, it, it runs as it should. And as far as, the gentleman wrote about recycling, the, I understand about the manufacturing and, and screening process, but bringing in old asphalt to reuse it and repurpose it is the perfect definition of recycling. I, I just heard that recycling is not part of whatever.
Not part of the?
I don't understand all the logistics of it. I've been retired since 2015. I go on my back deck, I have a coffee, I got a bird's eye view, I can wave to his guys, I see Mr. Potter's men and his machine. There's nothing grossly noisy about the operation. I know what you're here to prove about the, the screening and stuff, but part of an everyday business to repurpose that instead of having it in some landfill or something like that, it's never interrupted my everyday life, lifestyle. So if it's been going on that long, where does past presidents take, take place here?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yes. My name is Valerie Martin.
What, can you, microphone?
Okay. I'm going to show you where I live.
Okay.
287, 289, American Legion Highway. I don't really understand this yet. Okay. So, okay, so this crushing that goes on?
Did you say your name and address again?
Yes, Valerie Martin, 287, 289, American Legion Highway.
Okay, thank you.
So I think it's been said here that it takes place up back. Spoke about how big the property was, the acreage. It takes place here.
Well, are you picking this up? She's talked a little?
Is it on or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So Sodom Road is here, it takes place back here, my yard is here, my house is here. Ralph said I didn't complain about dust, but I did. He has emails regarding that.
Okay.
My mother bought the property in 1999. That was not happening then. There were cows moving back there then. I understand that the business been there since the 80s. What Ralph explained to me was that JR Construction had permission to have his employees come in, drive away with, with equipment, and bring equipment back and take their vehicles and leave. Now I'm, I'm understanding that he has a permit to dump there, okay? My concern is the silica. Silica in the air, that is what's produced when asphalt is crushed. I can send this article to email this to someone. This is OSHA regulations. I understand the OSHA regulations have to do with employees. Still, it's the same concerns that are happening there that are silica dust is going in the air. I'm not an employee, but I'm a neighbor, a butter. I think that perhaps it, a lot of the neighbors aren't so bothered because it's not right in their backyard, it's back further. So, okay, I'm just going to read a little bit from this, okay? In the road, in the road construction, paving, and asphalt production industries, the primary source of airborne crystalline silica exposure occurs from fracturing, aggregating, fracturing, aggregate, or rock. That's what he's doing. He's crushing it back there. Exposure, exposure to respiratory silica dust is extremely hazardous, can cause cancer, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, and psycosis, an incurable lung disease. That's, that's what I have to say. I am not happy that it's going on.
Have you, have you brought this up to the health department?
I have not brought this up to the health department. I would say I feel like exhausted. I've been in touch with Ralph's office since last year. And I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And you said that, that you do notice substantial dust in the air?
Yes. And also silica crystals, they don't necessarily have to be that big.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, yeah. Silicon crystals don't have to be that big to be airborne. And, yeah, when dumping happens, they can be big clouds of dust, and it's dumping of used asphalt. I don't know if anyone has any more questions.
But Ralph, you said that you didn't have any complaints about...
I have no complaints. I have a problem with the noise.
About dust? You have what?
About the noise.
Ralph, you probably need to review your emails.
I will.
Okay.
How long have you been in your residence?
My mother bought that property in nineteen ninety-nine. That was not happening. I, I bought it in nineteen twenty. Like I said...
Nineteen twenty?
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty twenty, I'm sorry. Like I said, there were cows moving back there. This crushing of asphalt has not been going on since the eighties. I can remember my stepfather complaining about it in twenty-seventeen. That, you know, I realize a lot of people give me rough estimates, but that's my rough estimate.
Okay?
Okay.
Good.
I just want to say silica...
Name and address again, just to...
Len Potter, A.J. Potter and Sons, six zero four Main Road. I just want to say that the silica pollution she talks about, we're very much aware of that. And the machines are equipped with water spray bars. So if we see it's very, very dusty, then we hook, bring a water tanker and hook it up to the machine, and it gets pumped through these spray bars that keep the dust down to a minimum to meet OSHA standards.
Has the, the health department ever been out to your, to your site to evaluate your, your facility?
No, sir.
Okay.
And you say it does meet OSHA standards?
Yes, yes.
And they've been involved?
All the time. Silica is the next asbestos.
Hmm.
We're very much aware of that.
Thank you.
The manufacturers of the equipment are very much aware of that.
Hold it, Mr. Potter, hold, stay up there. Through the chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Potter, the same thing you're discussing there for seventeen Sodom Road actually happens in Central Village too, right?
That's correct.
You guys are crushing in Central Village.
That's correct.
Same deal.
But we're in a...
Wash down everything.
We're a business area. What's being done in a business area?
Correct. And you're doing it right across the street?
No, down the road.
Down the road, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep, thank you.
And anyone else? No, any other comments from board members? Okay, again, name and address.
Valerie Martin.
You gotta say it into the microphone.
Yep. Valerie Martin, two-eight-seven, two-eight-nine, American Legion Highway. Regarding dust, perhaps those, that machinery has, whatever it needs to keep the silica dust down, however, in an email to Ralph, I spoke of dumping and dust. That's not being kept down, that's just floating in the air. And it's used asphalt that's being dumped to then be processed.
Okay, thank you.
The dumping, he's allowed to do that through the conservation commission because he has soils permit. Anything that's part of the conservation commission has given him the permission to do it. Stockpile.
May I respond to one point that was raised, and I may need Mr. Reposa to help me out just to point out, but there's no denial that there were cows, there are no longer cows, is that correct?
We buy and sell every now and then, we haven't had some in a while, but we do.
Okay, so there certainly have been cows on the site, I think there are any there right now, but they do, I think roam in the, in the back area, but they're not where the stockpiles were.
The whole area is fenced in.
So, we don't deny that there have been cows on the property, but...
I think the two thousand nine G.S. site, site shows cows in.
But respectfully, I would suggest to the board that it's been established through a number of witnesses that there has been crushing going on at the site for quite a considerable period of time.
In excess of ten years.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Valerie Martin, two-eight-seven, two-eight-nine, American Legion Highway. Are we having estimates of excess in ten years?
Well, Mr. Potter was up and he described it as...
It was said in the eighties, late eighties, early nineties.
No.
No.
That's not how long it's been going on, that's how long the business has been there.
Will Mr. Potter, can you speak to that again?
Yeah.
Maybe it's in early nineties.
Late eighties, early nineties, is what you said, Len, right?
Yes, I just wanted to know if it was after, well, ten years ago, then. Comments, questions? Will there be any motion to...
I would like to say I just, I don't think, are we, are we talking or are we closing up the hearing?
We're closing the hearing.
Oh, okay, let's close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Make it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no. Hearing is closed. At this point then, we deliberate. We get no inputs from the, from anyone. We can ask questions, but, but the, the public part of this is over, we'll deliberate and make a decision. And again, it's a supermajority that's required to pass the, the appeal. And I want to make sure that everybody understands, this is kind of all, think of it as almost like a negative vote, because if we vote to grant the appeal, what we are saying is that Ralph was wrong and that the cease and desist order should be remanded. If, if we reject the appeal, then we are saying that Ralph was correct and the cease and desist order remains in effect. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands. And we always generally start off, we, it's a matter of course that we start with a motion to grant because our bylaws identify how many votes it takes to grant something. So even if nobody, whether it's zero or four or five or, or five and zero, the motion is always a motion to grant, so.
And I wouldn't say necessarily that Ralph was wrong or right. I think Ralph needed more, we need more fact, fact, fine.
That's correct.
No one just say, you know, that he's willy-nilly, serving cease and desist orders.
Okay, so open to the board for discussion.
I just think this is one of those grandfathered things that...
I, I think we certainly have enough evidence that it's been in operation for more than ten years, and according to Ralph, it's been in operation for more than ten years, then it's essentially grandfathered in. And I think though that as far as the complaints for, for health-related issues, that's entirely a, a health department, so if there is an issue, certainly you can, any health-related aspects of this could be brought to the attention of the board of health.
So, if, if a specific permit is not given for an activity, is it ten years or is it thirteen years grandfathered in?
No, it's ten.
It is ten.
So zoning, it's only valid, it's only valid as ten years.
Ten years, okay.
So if somebody does something, even if they do it illegally for ten years...
If they do it very illegally for ten years and I finally catch up to it, then it...
Then it becomes legal.
Yeah, but even...
I can go after them, but it's gonna get a little...
It's a statute of limitations.
The statute of limitations is gonna, and if I go to court, judge is gonna say they're gonna throw it out because statute of limitations is over.
Statue of limitations is over, right, okay.
But even, even though he has a soil permit now, okay, soil permits weren't even out in, in the early or late nineties, early nineties and late eighties.
I don't know when they started.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think they were, you know, they progressively added things. I think that's how it evolved.
I'd just like to say that I, I mean, so it's, it's, it seems to me like we've heard that it has been going on more than ten years, so that, that is satisfied. But I would just like to make a comment about, I don't think that you, I don't think this activity can be included under right-to-farm agriculture. I don't think it's an agricultural activity, just, you know, as, so I don't think the right-to-farm argument is particularly valid.
This is a business.
That's right.
Yes.
I think actually, Mr. Vieira, I think is his name, we spoke about that?
Yes.
I think it's because, only because Ralph puts soil in his, in his letter and not asphalt.
Right.
So I think there's more of a misinterpretation of the letter and the issue.
But asphalt is not.
It's asphalt.
Yeah, I would not consider asphalt.
Right.
That's, I agree with you, Thomas.
I understand about composting, but I don't think crushing asphalt is considered right-to-farm.
Okay.
Any comments? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the appeal.
Read the, you know, make the whole appeal, make the whole grant.
I'll make a motion to grant the administrative appeal from a cease and desist order of the building commissioner dated July twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three, that screening of soils is a form of manufacturing and not allowed in a residential agricultural district.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Do we have discussion before vote?
Can you just reveal if you vote yes or vote no, which, whatever, voting.
Again, I'll reiterate, voting yes says that we are granting his appeal, which means that Ralph incorrectly...
You said interpreted.
Interpreted the zoning bylaw. So that's what we're saying, if we're saying yes, that...
That he interpreted it correctly?
That he incorrectly interpreted the bylaw.
Okay.
So we are, if we vote yes, we are agreeing with the petitioner that the cease and desist order should be remanded.
Okay, got it.
So we have a, we have a motion and a second?
I will second.
I think you already said it. I just want to know if there's any discussion before we want to vote. Usually we don't put conditions on this, it's either a yes or no.
Well, I think, I think we, I'd like to bring that up because he stated he only does this one or two weeks a year, or whatever that timeframe is, and we could actually put that in there so it doesn't happen fifty-two weeks.
Well, we really can't. This is either in the, because, because it's a, it's an administrative appeal, so we're only saying, is Ralph correct or is he not correct? You know, a lot of other things we would put conditions on, you know, we could even put a condition that they, you know, that they have a health inspection, but that's not really relevant to this because all we want to know is, is should, should Ralph rescind his, his cease and desist letter? That's, that's really all we're doing here. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no, let the record show it's unanimous. There is a twenty-day appeal period, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Board, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
You can go back to your other meeting now. Okay.
How are you? I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll take whatever you don't...
Yeah, you can take those.
Yeah, recycle.
Lives next to a farm in the north. Because it smells.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The second hearing is a continuation of an application of K.C. Amaral for variance to continued use of residential building known as five-eight-one C. Drift Road, Westport, Mass. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Patty!
Excuse me.
Military man?
I'll start over again. The second, the second hearing is a continuation... Is a continuation of an application of K.C. Amaral for variance... For a variance to continued use of a residential building known as five-eight-one C. Drift Road, Westport, Mass., which will not be detrimental to the public good, will not impact the integrity and character of the neighborhood nor negatively impact the budding properties require no structural changes and would otherwise cause substantial hardship to the applicant as mandated by zoning by law, Article five, second five-one, property located at five-eight-one Drift, C. Drift Road, Westport, Mass. Again, this is a continuation, so we'd already gone through, the applicant though might as well come and, and sit with us. So we've already discussed with the applicant, we continued it because some of this was based on previous decisions and some of the board members wanted time to review the previous decisions to make sure that we understood all the pieces of, of this particular application. So, having said that, I'll open it up to the board members to, I, I will give a, I looked at some of this, I'll, I'll start off with a really quick overview. I mean, the property at five-eighteen Drift Road includes two lots with three structures. Lot one has two structures with the addresses fifty-eight, B and C. Lot one has one structure with an address of five-eighteen X., correct?
Five-eight-one, yes.
Five, five-eight-one, I probably got the things, five-eight-one. In twenty-eighteen, a variance was requested by the owner, Mrs. Amaral, for side yard relief. That was what the, the petitioner, the variance was for, side yard relief. As part of the twenty-eighteen variance application, the petitioner noted in their application that the building five-eight-one C. will no longer be used as a residence. That, that's in the, in their briefing. After a lot of discussion, again, this is twenty-eighteen, the zoning board of appeals approved the variance with a condition, which was requested by the owner, that the structure at five-eight-one shall not be used as a seat, shall not be used as a residential dwelling, and any and all kitchen facilities must be completely removed and never existed in the future. After the twenty-eighteen hearing, I know Ralph Suson did go out and try to check on if, if, if the owner had complied and was not allowed to, to actually go on the premises to do that. Mrs. Amaral then sold the property, lot two, to her son, Casey, right?
Correct.
Lot one.
Lot one, I mean, and lot...
Both of them.
Lot one is the one with the B and C, right?
That's correct, both of them, yeah.
But, but your son, but he never, he did, he doesn't, does not live there and does not intend to live on the property, instead you rent out both structures.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. K.C. Amaral continues to earn income from both dwellings, a violation of both the decision to the ZBA and zoning bylaws. Zoning bylaws does not allow multiple families in, on one, on one lot. K.C. Amaral requested variance that the existing detached structure be converted into a detached accessory apartment. So, that's kind of where we are at the moment, though it's kind of like just, the broad brush history...
That was the, the last time Mr. Amaral was in front of us, requested for a variance for an accessory apartment. Now he's asking for a variance to allow the second home to stay at the views.
As an accessory apartment?
I don't think so.
No, as a pre-existing non-conforming use.
It's...
That was, that was last...
That was at December, that was in November twenty-twenty.
But it was suggested in the October twenty-two, in two hearing that that wasn't going to fly, so to come back and to prove that it's always been used as a house, or at least prior to when zoning went into effect in that area, which was nineteen seventy-three, which we provided testimony last time, and I think we've accomplished that piece, but...
Okay, okay, so anyway, that's where we are at the moment, so I know, so other members wanted time to...
I just want, can I just clarify a couple things there?
Yes.
So, number one, you had said the, maybe it was the wording, but that the owner requested that the condition about the house no longer being used as a house requested that.
Yes.
That was requested the board, the owner didn't...
No, 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 it happened right here, it was your lawyer.
And the lawyer said explicitly it was...
No, yes, I know it requested to change, but okay, I might have misheard what you said, but I, I thought what I heard was in twenty-eighteen that the owner, which was my mom at the time, requested that you put the condition in that say...
Yes, she did.
She did.
She didn't.
She did.
She wasn't there.
Yes, she...
But her attorney did.
No, it was, he agreed to it, but it was, okay, that's fine, it's, it's in there.
We have it in the meeting notes, and we have it in the decision, and we have it on the video.
I watched it last night, it was, it was suggested by the chair at the time, and they agreed.
You gotta read the beginning when lawyer or whatever, when we're discussing this.
No, actually it was Mr. Leach who said, Ms. Leach, not her lawyer, had said that he, he just immediately proactively said, and we're gonna take this out of commission.
Correct.
And I believe it was also in the original petition.
And but, I reviewed this book, both here and separately. And, but, I reviewed this book, both here in February and April 2018, and my recollection is that there was a lot of discussion earlier in the thing about splitting it, how they were going to get in and out of there, lane, driveways and all that, that was extensive conversation about that. And then, when Mr. Leach discussed things, he actually did say what you just said, that we're going to eliminate that. And then, everyone sat back and Jerry actually said, "Well, how are we going to do that?" And Ralph suggested, he did not say, he suggested that you, there were three things that you could do.
Bathroom, kitchen.
Yeah.
A bedroom.
And you, the board actually put it as one of the conditions at that point, which was very late in the hearing, very last minute thing.
So I think, I guess.
I wasn't at this hearing, so I'm not going to make.
Yeah, I watched the video too, I mean, it's a condition, no one's questioning that, right? So I don't, we don't need to debate that, it's there, there's no question.
In that meeting, if you don't mind my interrupting, initially those two white houses were to be separated and sold, but then that plan changed, correct?
She tried to sell them and they were listed for over two years and they didn't sell. So then she did sell them to me, but the plan, the whole reason we did this and are here is because they were, the plan was to sell them as two separate houses because that's, you know, would be more appealing to somebody than buying a bunch together.
And then having a non-apartment, perhaps just a shed really wouldn't be a factor unless it was to the new owners, but that never materialized.
Correct, and it was also discussed how, you know, if the new owner wanted to put family in there and then they, it would acquire, it would, excuse me, meet the requirements of the accessory and they could come back. So there was discussion about, okay, take the kitchen out so we know it's not being used, but don't, don't knock it down because somebody could buy that and want to put their mother in there and put the kitchen back. So yes, that's fair. The other thing I'd like to clarify is, you know, just that Ralph wasn't allowed on the property. He was allowed on the property, he knocked on the door, he, he was never allowed on the property. He did reach out to me, I wasn't there, and I said, "You're welcome to come by, we could schedule a visit, you can go in the house, but I'm telling you, somebody's living in it and that's what you're looking to see, so I'll tell you right now and I'll put it in writing and save you the trip." But it wasn't, that he wasn't allowed to come on the property, I just want to clarify that.
Well, I was at the original hearing for this and I watched it again because there's been so much confusion about what actually happened, but I know you've said that somebody has continually lived there, but at 2411 in the hearing, Jerry asked if anyone is currently living in the house.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that, I saw that too, I watched it last night.
Excuse me, let me finish.
Yes, ma'am.
And Sean Leach says, "Not that I'm aware of." And then a few minutes later, the attorney, Marky, I believe it is, says, "I know there is no one living in the front one."
So there was nobody, can I speak now? I don't want to.
So, my question is, at the time of that hearing, when there was all of this issue and, you know, questioning going on, it, two people are saying that nobody lives there.
They were incorrect, they were incorrect, I can tell you 100% certain that 581A and 581B were, there was nobody living in the house at that time because.
In C, they're talking about.
Somebody has been living in C, it's actually the same guy has been living there since before the 2018 hearing.
Well, neither one of your representatives believed that anyone was living there.
Wasn't my representative, it was my mom's, but they were incorrect, they misspoke. And I mean, I don't, you know, I don't have it with me, but I could easily get for you the least that says he was there and he's been there.
I think, I think it's clear that someone has been.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we've, the testimonies from, yeah, but yes, that was, I listened to it last night and they were wrong. That was an incorrect statement. And the only reason that 581A and 581B, the two big ones in the front, were empty was because she was planning on selling them and the realtor advised that, you know, it's obviously easier to show a house when it's empty. People had moved out, so she strategically kept them empty so that they could be listed and people could come do showings. But the guy that lives in 581C was there prior to this and weren't going to kick the guy out until it was sold and figured out if, you know, maybe he could stay, maybe, you know what I mean? But I'm 100% sure he was there prior to the 2018 hearing and still is.
Right, so it, it. This says you, let me check my. You list Section 5.1, Article 5, Section 5.1 as, as the reason for the variance.
That's another question, I'm not sure if the petition, if granted, gives him the relief he wants.
Well, I don't think we can grant somebody renting a place and not living there.
Well, what I'm saying, I'm saying if we were to grant this petition, and I'm not saying we're going to grant this petition, I still don't think the petition gives the relief because he's asked for a variance and isn't in a special permit.
Yeah, this is.
Variance, and, and I know, it's frustrating, and that's why, I was the one who counseled you in November to see a lawyer, and your lawyer, perhaps, and I'll, I'll refer to the board members who have more experience, I believe your petition should have been a special permit and not a variance, and your lawyer should have known that. So if, we're going to tell you that we even, even if we said yes, that petition, I don't think is appropriate. But correct me if I'm wrong, Chairman, because I get a little confused with, because a variance is the land.
Your variance is requesting to continue use of the use of a residential building, but a variance has to be against.
The land.
A, 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 a specific, you vary something that's in the bylaw.
Right, and he.
And the only thing you reference is Table 5.1, is, is the table of use.
He references the topography, the land, it's excited.
No, 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 but no, no, that's, that's rational. When you vary, when you request a variance, you are requesting a variance against some part of the zoning by law. You know, Section 5, like, if you wanted to have a variance against the accessory apartment, then it would be a variance against Section 9.5.3.
Right, and that's what, that's the approach we took last October and then we, that wasn't going to work, so.
So this is, you are trying to vary Section 5.1, which is the table of use. So exactly what part of table of use are you requesting, we vary.
So the use of this house was, it's grandfathered, and I think we can all agree and we've proven.
I don't agree.
I don't agree with it at all.
I, I actually, I did a lot of research and I don't agree. And I, and, and believe me, in November, and even the last time we met, I was on your side here. I wanted to help you, but I don't think the evidence of what's recorded in the deed shows that it's grandfathered.
What do you, can you elaborate on that?
Can I, yes, there is a plan filed and registered at the registry of deeds in 1972 that says that was a shed, signed, approved by the previous owner and the town of Westport. So, it was held out to be a shed by the previous owner. You can't, so you can't afford the grandf, that, that previous owner, your father, sort of, in my mind, gave away the right to say that it was always, it was his residential house.
But that plan, so.
In 1972, which is before the 73 zoning, so this is before, so therefore you can't grant grandfathered.
Can I, can I look at that?
So right now he's a non-conforming use, is he that right now?
Well, I'm still trying to wrap my fingers around what he's trying to get a variance against. There's, Table 5.1 is everything in the town. So which part of everything in the town are you referencing to get a variance against?
The condition, we all know what happened in 2018.
There's a table, so something in here, you, you need to say, "I need variance against that aspect."
Okay.
Because that's, that's what a variance is, it's varying something, the town says you have to do something and you say, "I don't want to do it, I need a variance to not do it." That, that's how a variance works. So, you listed to Table 5.1 as what you are getting a variance against, but Table 5.1 is essentially all the uses in the town.
Yeah, and I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything here.
Okay, so, I don't know, it's just, it's a little frustrating because I've been here, this is the fourth time, and every time I come, it's.
What's the second? You were just telling me, we can't tell you what the right avenue is.
Right.
That would be, that would be coaching, we can only tell.
Well, I, I know, but if.
He asked you to get a lo, I think we coached you to get a lawyer.
We coached you to get a lawyer, to find the right avenue.
Yeah, and clearly that still wasn't the right avenue and that's, hey, better lawyer, whatever, I get it, but, but, you know, I just don't know what it's going to take to put, to put this through, okay? Like it's, we came in 2022, you know, use it as an accessory dwelling. Not going to fly, we talked about it for a long time that night. I watched the meeting from October and there was, I can quote the times if you want, but we talked for a long time at that end. We did, meaning like, if you can prove that somebody lived in that house, you know.
Jerry was saying, Jerry was saying.
We did, Jerry, I mean, we, we went back and forth for like, an hour, and it was a really good conversation. So, you know, I attempted to do that, you know, apparently, you know, you said it should be a special permit, not a variance.
I, I, no, I didn't, I, I said, I, well, I clap for that, I just don't think what you filed was correct. I don't know what the correct thing is, and I said maybe a special permit.
You're in a, in a situation where trying to find the right avenue is not as straightforward as most of these things are. You essentially have two residences on one piece of property that's called a multifamily.
No, not a multifamily.
Pre-existing non-conforming use.
A multifamily, two single families, which is different than a multifamily.
Two single families, which isn't a lot.
Which is a big difference.
So, and.
It's a pre-existing non-conforming use, the plans, you know, I, those, those were never put into place, but I know.
They were recorded by the registry of deeds.
I understand, I understand, but like, they're, it says prepared for, I don't, they didn't sign that.
Right here.
Says prepared for, doesn't, it's not signed by them.
Yeah, because the, the town approved it, they don't need to sign.
Well, that's not, that doesn't exist though, that was never acted on, it was never sold, and I believe if you look at the hearing when Sean Leach, they referenced this and they said, "Well, because the property never actually changed hands and it was owned by the same people and more than 10 years went by, it, it never went into effect," like that, you know.
No, he said the property merged, which I don't know.
Which really wasn't.
Which really didn't happen, because properties don't, again, there was a, in my mind, in 2018, there were a lot of things that was misspoken.
I completely agree with that, and I think, and that's one of the things that bothered me the most, I mean, that, you know, there was, there were a lot of statements and it was made by the chair at the time, but, you know, such as, you know, "We need to make sure we put a lot of conditions in, this family has a history, a going rogue without building." There were a lot of things said that weren't true, like this, there were people living in this house.
You want to see a few other things that, two variances that have never been acted upon by your family?
So the one here from 1972.
True, yeah.
That's why you're.
They were denied a building permit because there were, the setbacks were incorrect, hence, I, and I'm, this is not truth, this is not fact, this is what I sort of gather from the evidence, is that they needed to do this in order to get the building permit to build the house in 1972.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So this did go into effect.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to.
And then they asked another variance to take another structure down and it's, in my mind, there's still six structures, at least by 2018, there were still six structures on the property. Again, the next one, it's 84. They asked for a variance for exactly what you're doing, to keep two residents on the property, and it was denied.
I don't understand, like, you know, I, I don't.
Neither do I.
I wasn't, I wasn't there, I can't speak to it, I know.
And neither can we.
But what's, I know what was approved in 2018 and I agree, like, I think you just started to say, like, there were some statements in the beginning that, you know, I don't think were correct, and it's concerning that, and you just brought up the point that the lawyer and the engineer made a statement that somebody wasn't, that's incorrect, and I can wholeheartedly tell you that.
Yeah, but now it's a matter of public record.
Right, okay, but we're here to clarify it, and I think, you know, we.
I don't think we can. I, I looked deep, and then the board knows I looked deep, as you can see. There are so many inconsistencies in this property, including the hearing in 2018 of inconsistencies, that the only way I see this be, for your own benefit, to clarify the rights of these properties is to go to land court. I mean, they're the only ones who are going to be able to decipher all this, it's not, I mean, we can't say, we can't give you a variance on something that, you know, maybe shouldn't have even been enacted in the first place because it was all stipulated upon the fact that the testimony we're receiving from the petitioner, i.e. your lawyer's lawyer, was incorrect. I mean, we made, we made decisions based on incorrect data. And I'm still wondering if there's actually a building permit for that house in 1972.
I'm sure there isn't.
And yet they said there was.
Talking about the 581C?
No, the, the, the F, I think, the house, your mother's house.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't, I don't know, but.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot.
I believe it was stated in the, in the hearing that there was, I don't have it, I don't know. There was a lot of conversation about building permit for, about building permit for the houses we're actually talking about, and I think the record was kind of said, if it was before 1970, it's, you know, it's really hard to find a building permit and that was never mind 1900 when these were built, so, you know. And I was asked multiple times, like, "Do you have the building permit for this small house?" "No, I don't, there were no building permits." And I think like, you know, we're okay with that, but there were a lot of things said in 20, there's no building permit for this 581C, so yes, if we, if we approve this, we got to get rid of it because it's the right thing to do. And it wasn't, it was, it was inaccurate, it was a house, we have testimony, yeah, it's noted as a shed on there. Point taken, it's incorrect, and that's.
But it's also a legal document, slightly a little bit more legal than an adulation by a relative.
It's not just by a relative, and it's, it's also, you know, we've had neighbors that have spoken to, they've been there for over the time and they have no issues with it. We had the former tax assessor saying it's been taxed that way, and there was a lot of conversation about that, it's two different things, but it's still a testament to the fact that it's been going on.
Yeah, I don't think any of us dispute that it's been going on, I just think that we have to decide if we can allow it to be going on.
But there was nothing, you know, in, in the previous matter, we talked about the 10 years and like, this has been going on a lot more than 10 years. The only thing that disrupted it is we had, we made, you know, came before you in petition that the lots be divided into two. If that, if that didn't happen, like, there would, there would be no conversation. So, you know, I think, yeah, there's some messy stuff there and I can't speak to it, right? And that being held against me, I don't think it's fair, we talked a lot about last time, how if this wasn't a family, you know, sale, we'd be talking about that and, you know, so, you know.
And I'm looking at as a third party, I'm not looking at as you are, at the family sale.
Did, did it any point, Jeff, Jeff issue anything to us about this? Because he, when he, the last comment he made was, yeah, I think I got to review all this myself too.
I, I think as a, the property owner of this property and the one abutting it, if I was that person, I would seek to get clarity, and the only place you're going to get clarity is, is, is in the land court. Because it is, and, and to add to the unclarity of it all, is that you will probably be the successor of interest to the other property as well, so you can tidy this all up now or you can let it just fester and.
Yeah, I mean, as far as, again, the, the issue at hand, we have a variance against who knows what to essentially allow two residences on one lot. And even, even though there was a decision made to not allow that, so we are asking to, to negate a previous decision.
That's correct.
Right. By the way, we did not close the hearing from last time, so I am going to, still going to ask for public input, as long as it's new public input, not regurgitation of what's been said. We already have what, 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 what everybody said in the last hearing. So, you know, we're going to continue to talk and then I'll open it up to the public again.
Okay. You know, the only thing I would add is.
And I think, by the way, again, this thing, the problem with variances are, it is the highest standard that we have in amongst all of our petition types. It is the hardest one to grant, because not only do you have to identify what you want to do, but you have to identify the hardship of why granting that is a hard. Of why granting that is a hardship, and the hardship is not financial, hardship is based on. Something to do with the land, that there's a stream running through it, there's a, there's a ledge, there's a rock that you can't do, so you need to vary where you wanna put something, what you wanna do. Based on some aspect of the land, so. Variances are, 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 tend to be more difficult to grant than anything else, because they, there's a higher standard for them.
Okay, but then we'll.
So, in this case. The hardship is primarily financial, correct?
That's a piece of it, but it's also, and it was talked a lot about in the previous hearing, I mean, where the houses are situated, you know, we talked, the side yard offset.
No, they're still, no, we, we're fine with having A and B and C. Or A and B being that close together, we're, we're having problems with C. And according to the last decision in twenty eighteen. It was to be not decommissioned as a residence, so right now. Let's just say you only own B and C, you don't own A. A is out of it, all the other ones are out of it, B and C. You are operating two residences on one piece of property, which is against zoning regulations. You submit. That it should have been grandfathered, and the twenty eighteen decision shouldn't have occurred. Even though it was requested by the applicant at that time. Right? So the only thing you can do is to prove there's grandfather, right? I think there's enough evidence from what we have between what you have and what I did a little digging of, that that's suspect.
And even, and even if he can identify it was grandfathered, because of a decision in twenty eighteen, that, that potentially negates the grandfathering, because not only did the. Did the, the decision mandate that it not be.
Used.
Used, it was also identified by the owner that it would not be used.
Right, and the property transferred ownership to, that factors into it all.
So I'm not even sure grandfathering would be. A legal recourse.
And the fact that the lots were split during that timeframe.
Lots weren't actually split, they were always two lots. All we, all we did in the, in the twenty eighteen was setback lines.
During the last hearing, we, we discussed.
Like, I'm, I'm not even sure why we, that ever came up.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's an accurate statement, that those three in the front were all, it was, it was one lot.
No, it's what, two lots.
That was never actually put into effect, though, it was never, it was never identified that way, it was two lots, it was five.
It was identified this way, it is registered for the deeds. That means it's the, it's that you got the lot one, you got the lot two, and you got the big lot in the back, right? The fact that the assessor's office was assessing this as one big lot, has nothing to do with.
Right.
What.
Right.
It is.
But then there was a plan drawn to split the lots.
No, it's the same, it's, it's the same thing, it was already done in seventy-two, so I never went on, understand why they decided to do this in twenty eighteen.
Because she wanted to sell both white houses as separate properties.
It was already separate properties.
It was already.
Can I say that again, because I, I don't, I, I don't.
But the houses were too close together.
Yeah.
Yes, it was straight.
And there was nothing on the record, there was nothing on the record saying that a setback was okay, but.
All we did in twenty eighteen was setback.
Right, but we didn't need to do that, to sell it, right?
Yes.
I think you did.
You did, because otherwise it was, you know.
There were only a few feet.
Wouldn't have been able to sell it that way, because it, the lines wouldn't.
Yeah.
Probably had to move the driveway, and there was a bunch of things that had to be done.
The condition of granting it was based on, um, making C inhabitable, so that you got the variance that you wanted in preparation to sell. Which didn't happen, I understand it didn't happen.
That's correct. Yeah, I don't, I, I'd have to dig more to your point, but like, I, I know for a fact, I, you know, understand that this was here. But it was never acted on, so I, and I don't know.
Acted on by who?
The previous owner.
They went, they got an approval not required at the planning board.
No, this is, this is, this is from nineteen seventy-two.
Yeah, I know, that's seventy-two, in two thousand eighteen, they went and found the planning board to change that.
But that was the part of where, that's where the condition of taking C down came, and that's what is issue. What I'm saying is that the lots were always three separate lots. Non-conforming. From nineteen seventy-two, I'm unsure why they went ahead and re, that's why there was no approval needed, because it was already in effect.
I really think this was approval not needed with the planning board, and then for whatever reason, they came to the zoning board at the time, and. Never moved forward with it, because it was denied, and then it kind of got dropped, and like I say, have to.
It was recorded, it wasn't denied.
It does, but the other one was recorded, too, the one in twenty eighteen was, too, the plan, and we couldn't have done anything with it until we got your approval.
If I started with this, but I wanna make sure I identify that the voting members will be Cynthia Kozakowicz. Barbara Potawatli, myself, Roger Menard. Konstantsky, and Ray Elias, and this is a variance which requires a super majority of four of the five homes. Just wanted to, I wasn't sure if I'd said that in the beginning, I wanted to make sure that, that it's clear to everybody.
Does he have an option of. Not doing this and pulling out?
Well, he can always withdraw.
Without prejudice?
Yeah, he can always do that, that's, that's.
Or he can, or we can. Vote, and if he doesn't like the output, he can appeal.
The, uh, are there any other comments before, or I'll open it up to the public? What comments, anybody in the public wanna speak? And again, um, new information, we have everything that was said before on record. Okay, Tony, go ahead, name and address.
Anton Vieira, eight Kennedy Avenue, US Board. Hearing what took place tonight is new information for me anyways, and having an understanding of what transpired over the years. Would the zoning Board of Appeals entertain an opportunity to withdraw the variance, and then to request a special permit? Which I think maybe was not recommended initially, or was in the, the zoning board suggested.
First of all. We don't ask to withdraw, the, the applicant can always ask to withdraw.
I was suggesting, the only reason I said it that way is, i- i- if we look at the documentation, including the administrative assistant recommendation of not to pursue, and then. Because they've already dealt with this issue, um, there seems to be, from the town standpoint, some recommendation in terms of what options Casey would have. And all I'm suggesting is this, because I know some people don't see it as a grandfathered situation, but. If you do recognize that somebody was living in there for that period of time, a shed, a cottage, whatever you wanna call it on a piece of paper. People, what, can be verified, they were living in that property, as many still do in different parts of our town, some refer to them as sheds and cottages. Knowing that, if there's any way that, that the group could at least consider a special permit.
Well, okay, first of all, what, what we, what we do not do is we don't make recommendations, because then, if he does that, and he comes back and we reject it, he said, well, you recommended it. So.
I was just proposing a question to the chairman, because I was unclear about what would perhaps be the correct method.
Now, I mean, uh, these, there's, there's very few options left, you talked about a special permit, essentially a special permit as an accessory apartment, but that would then also trigger a variance.
Yeah, I was, I was, I think that's where they went before.
Yes.
The only difference would be a special permit because of non-conforming use.
That would, that's not a special permit then.
Okay.
That would, that would be a finding.
Okay, so, the, the, a proper suggestion, I guess, from, from my standpoint, to, not you, but, but to, um, the family involved. Is maybe that's what they should be asking for, a finding based on information, and a withdrawal of the variance.
Don't wanna make a recommendation, you know, because of that, but.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, there's, there's only, if you, you, you came in front of us once for a special permit, but what you did also required a variance, and you didn't request a variance. In other words, the special, you came when, I, I believe in the last one, you came in front of us because you wanted to make an accessory apartment?
He wanted to make, make the, the second dwelling a legal accessory apartment, but he didn't make use the conditions of.
So it was both, it was a special permit and a variance, the variance was for relief from the condition of, of occupying.
Okay, right, okay, in which case, and we.
And then, you know, a lot of good conversation, and it was, you know, it's.
Well, there's a lot of reasons why that's, that's, that's really difficult, and, and I'll read you, and I'll read you the reason why, and this is right out of the, um. Our zoning bylaws, when the town enacted the accessory apartment. What about, six years ago or so, and by the way, we get, we get more petitions on accessory apartments than anything else in town. It. It was done for very particular reasons, and I'll read the reason why, it is to provide older homeowners. With the means of obtaining rental income, companionship, security, and services, thereby enabling them to stay more comfortably in the homes. And the neighborhoods they might otherwise be forced to leave, that was the rationale for allowing an accessory apartment. So, let's face it, what you're doing. Fit into that, that, the overreaching rationale of how we accept. Accessory apartments.
Yeah, I understand that logic, and that's why we, um, you know, at least at this time, like, you know, I think there's, you know, potentially would wanna occupy the, the larger house in the future, just can't do it right now for personal reasons, so. But I understand what you're saying.
Okay, all right. Any, any other comments from the.
Just to be clear, we're not making any, giving you any advice of what to come back to us next. At my initial, just, just statement of.
That's assuming we vote against the variance.
Or, or, yes, but my, you know, okay, cool.
Any other comments from the. Public? No. Do you want us to go forward with this? As, with, our next step is then to close the hearing and vote.
Okay. Uh, withdraw without prejudice.
You wanna withdraw without prejudice? Don't we have, you don't have the.
The withdrawal, no, I just have a continuation.
No, don't we have a withdrawal, do we not? Oh, okay.
No.
Okay, yeah, you just say, I. Casey. Withdraw my application for a variance. Can you, yeah, read it back?
I, Casey Amaral, withdraw my application for a variance to continue the use of residential building owned as five eighty-one C, draw for without prejudice.
Okay, um, yes, just sign and date it. Okay, uh. Make a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal.
I have a second.
No second, can I?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no?
No.
What's that?
No.
No? Okay, it's, it's, uh.
No.
You vote no?
No.
Uh, it's, it's a, uh. It's a majority rules on this.
Like you said, it's a majority for variance.
But it's not, we're not doing it on a variance, we're doing it on a motion to.
Okay.
So. Note that it was Ray, myself, and Barbara that voted affirmative, and.
Cynthia.
Cynthia and Constance both voted in a negative. Okay, thank you, um. I don't know, is this. I don't know where to go from here, so, you know, I think you really need to talk to somebody who knows. Yeah, I think you're, you're.
So what is, I'm sorry, can you just explain what just happened, so?
Trying to prove that this is grandfathered in. You really have no other basis for this other than it's grandfathered in, so you need somebody who can guide you into what, how to move forward with a grandfathering in approach.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just have a question, so.
What just happened was, we allowed you to withdraw, that means you're allowed to come back with another.
Angle.
Filing.
Right.
That may or may not. Get to where you want.
So it's a majority, so, like, two people that were not in favor of it, so I didn't know if that meant I'm withdrawing, but with prejudice, or I'm, I just don't know.
We granted your.
Withdraw.
Withdraw. Because.
Because it was a majority, not a majority.
Because it was, right, it was not a, we're not voting on a variance, we're voting on a withdrawal, which is the majority rule.
Okay.
But again, I think as chairman urged, that you really, this, I. There's a lot of complicated issues in this property, and the, the best you serve is to find yourself somebody who's experienced.
See, and, and.
Because there is so many gaps, because there isn't building permits, there isn't this, there isn't that, you need somebody who understands. How to get the information you need, and how to put together the appropriate.
And one of the things you gotta really see, when we make a decision, it goes with the property forever. So if we were to grant this, we would be saying forever in the day, you could have multiple families living on that property. And that's essentially, if we were to go forward with it, that's what we would be saying, we would be granting this for the life of the property, not just, not just for you.
I fully understand that, that's why we're.
So, that, that makes it difficult.
Got it?
Thank you.
Any other concerns? Thank you.
Good luck.
Uh. Meeting minutes. Meeting minutes of August twenty-second.
Really, was it that long?
Well, yes.
Wow, oh, yes, it was, yes, you're right.
Spin it around.
Thank you all for attending.
Fifteenth meeting was you were elected to.
Just for that one.
Marie put together this book. Whatever, twenty-something pages, meeting minutes.
I'm a phone star for.
And, did you put my last comments in? I think I wanted to, I mean, I, I apologize for being late with that, and I thought I had sent it to you previously.
Do you want it?
It was only a couple of words, right?
Yeah, it was, and I looked back to see if you had, I thought you had two.
Yeah, okay.
Could be absolutely.
So, um, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Barbara, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no, that's approved. Any other, any other business, we don't have any scheduled?
I, I do have, I do have.
I, I have something as well, but.
Okay.
Let me, can I just interject one second? Um, there's two requests there from the planning board.
Oh, yes, okay.
Also, I am expecting something on Monday, so I'm gonna be emailing members by now.
For dates?
Dates, maybe the beginning of November.
Things might get dicey after that for me, but that's.
After, yeah, I know, I'm looking at like maybe the first Wednesday, whatever that is.
So that, now?
Yes, sorry, thank you.
So last meeting, we. We denied. The variance on e-speech, and now, the, the last comment from Ralph was, well, the building has to be moved, this was a building that you just said, well, it's already up. Are we gonna follow that through, like we didn't do with this Casey Amaral?
That, that, that's one of the problems with the zoning Board of Appeals, we are not an enforcement agency.
Correct, but.
We can ask.
Appeal period doesn't end until the end of this week or something like that, yeah, and, and so far, we haven't heard anything, but it's been in front of the planning board, I think. It's, there's something got mentioned with that, I think.
No?
Well, he asked me, um, how he would go about.
Appeal.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna get sued.
Um, the thing is, connotation is also involved in that, and in order for them to issue notice of intent, they have to get an approval of the variance from this board, which didn't get, and they know that, so.
Hey, have we ever done that before, like, had a building moved?
Not that I can remember.
No?
No. Five, in ten years, nine years, whatever. No, no. Um, anything else that's coming, oh, um, we have started the short-term rental committee, of which I'm chairing.
God bless.
But it's, uh, but what we are doing again is, we had a draft from twenty eighteen or nineteen, that we are. Fleshing out, and we are working with, with our lawyer to, uh, to make sure we have the right wordings, and, you know. There are gonna be some issues with it, it's like any zoning change, somebody is, is gonna not like it, I mean. That's just the way zoning works, you know, a lot of people say, yeah, that's really great, and other people say, yeah, but for me, I don't like this paragraph, but that's what we have to do. The process for that is, we are gonna be working probably in the next month or two to, to get to a final stage, in which case we will share with the zoning Board of Appeals and the planning board, it will go to the planning board. Planning board will then review it. Planning board will then review it, because all of the zone, all of the zoning changes go through a planning board. They're the ones that will work directly with the select board. So, once it gets to the planning board, they will look at it, it will, they will then send it to the select board, who will look at it and send it back to the planning board, and then there will be public hearings for that, and there's a couple of other zoning changes. There's a root sick rezoning that we're also working on. So, that's, that's the process. And this goes up until about February of next year, because it takes that long, in order to get into the article for next May, or whenever the next...
First weekend, maybe.
Town, town meeting is...
So, 15th, Spencer suggested their bill? Yes.
Yeah, it's been applied.
Yes.
Yes.
And just to clarify something, that sort of, if I had voted, I would have voted the other way, if it's Spencer's way, because I don't think we should enforce it singularly. And it was commented that if you're zoning off, the building can only be addressed to a complaint, and that's not the rules. The inspector of buildings shall be informed or has reason to believe.
Yes.
And I think Ralph has reason to believe there's a lot of Airbnb's in his territory. And I, again, sort of, to Ray's point, if we are not gonna enforce our holdings, then we're all just wasting our time here. I love spending time with you guys, but it really is. I mean, the only way you can get this to that is just to our filing.
Yes.
Simple as that.
Yes.
I got a call today about Airbnb.
He's been, he's been told to go to court.
Yes, right.
And he has...
The only way to do that is...
There's nothing we can do.
No, we can't do that, because we don't do enforcement.
Right.
We do, and by anybody's comment, we can check up on it. He can do that.
Ralph can enforce an agent into the enforcement, so he couldn't, if, you know, have us do the enforcement. I think, I think we should start fighting people. I mean, we're looking, like, the town is looking, the town is looking for money, and they're leaving so much money on the table, right? And that's, you know, it just gets me.
Yeah, but fairness to Ralph, like even today, when we overturn, when we overturn his decision, I don't think that's, I don't think that's bad on Ralph. I think Ralph, Ralph gets a complaint, he has a duty to act on it.
And that's why he said, it wasn't that we were saying that he was wrong, we're just saying he was...
He didn't have all the information.
He didn't have all the information.
Right, right. Okay, just another quick subject is, very quickly, interfacing with, with our lawyer should be mostly through Maria. She should be our, as...
I broke the rule, even though I put a... But even though I find it.
And if we have continuations, then we really shouldn't be emailing each other about anything to do with it, because that's, that's an act, that's an open meetings violation. So, and just a quick...
Can you ask the attorney, how can we sort of...
We can't.
How, we can't have, because when we, like, half the time, we say something that's wrong...
We could have used his, we could have used his advice to them.
But then it looks like we're stupid, right? If, if any of us say something that isn't correct, and then it's corrected by somebody who was more Jerry, the zoning historian, um...
I understand you...
It's frustrating.
It is, it is, but according to, according to the open meeting act, if you have...
Can we discuss some hypotheticals? Can we discuss some hypotheticals?
You shouldn't do anything online.
Not with more than two members.
That's actually in a review that we have to do with the ethics committee, or whatever, okay? We're not supposed to be emailing each other about cases.
Right.
It's no different than being a juror. We're not supposed to discuss the case outside of the case.
Yes.
But, but how can we...
I shouldn't have to tell an attorney that.
You have to do it.
No, we can't, how, but we're not a juror.
We're almost, we're out like a court.
We sort of are. Any information that needs to go through Maria. If there's anything that, that needs to be discussed, it needs to go through. If we get information from our lawyer, from their lawyer, from their, it goes through Maria, Maria then sends it to us. We don't send things amongst each other. It only happens when we have continuations. Because we have continuations, we have time to, to get ourselves in trouble. And I know, it's, it, it sounds counterproductive, but that's still...
When I got that email today, I actually said, boy, should I be calling Roger right now? We're not supposed to be doing this.
That's why I clarified it. I put, I put a proposition, which is not a meeting.
Doesn't matter.
No, you can't do that.
Yes, you can.
Just by saying it's not a meeting, according to...
Yeah, I'll just talk to Maria next time.
So, we have these... We have these two plan reviews, and I didn't even look at them.
You could call somebody and talk on the phone.
I just got those like a couple days ago. One is a sub, I just got those a couple days ago anyway. One is a subdivision off of Drift Road.
With North Express, so, right here.
The north. And the other one is a marijuana plant, or a...
A marijuana establishment special permit.
Another one? The other one can't...
On State Road.
Right, so the other one who says it's a business can't ask, without a, without a...
I would think on the marijuana dispensary one, there are bylaws for that, so we ought to at least say we want to, you know...
Which one are we talking about? State Road? I think they have...
State Road, yes. It'd have to be State Road, that's right.
Is that the one that, where the steakhouse was gonna be, and then there's a sign?
No, this is a, it looks like a small...
Oh, it's where Dartmouth and their tennis was. So, it's right near there, it's where, it's where Dartmouth and their tennis was, I think. That's what I heard.
Okay, and the other one is dividing...
They're not into business in town, so I don't think we should approve it.
The other one is dividing property into nine lots. And...
Where's that?
This is off of...
North of X Bridge.
278 Drift Road.
We should have no comment.
It's on Drift Road, yeah. That, they want to break it up into lots, that's what planning board does.
What address is it, 2 something?
278, 3, and 312.
So, is it, do you know?
Um, yeah, it's that one. What are you, are you talking about the subdivision or the other thing?
The subdivision.
So, yeah, I would say on the marijuana one, to keep us involved in it, due to impacts, because there are zoning regulations for marijuana. In, in the other one, it's essentially breaking up...
That's a special permit from the planning board.
Yes, I know, but we still need to be, we still should be...
So, do they have to come before?
No, they have to come, but just, just advise.
That has to be 200, right?
Advise of the final will.
Anything else that anybody...
And they are right on the river.
So, we don't have any plan at the moment?
Don't. I'm looking at like, the second Wednesday of November.
Earlier in December would probably be better for me.
Earlier in December?
For medical reasons.
Well, oh, yeah, see, the problem is if they file...
We don't have any next book?
If they file on Monday or Tuesday.
So, this is on the non-river side.
So, you can get the wood.
You know.
Get some wood.
Well...
I think they're gonna file on Tuesday, so... 34, 64.
I meant to tell you, parking was pretty interesting in my pickup.
64th day is the 30th of those number.
I parked in front of a wood pile, and I said, give yourself enough wood.
No, that's what I mean, beginning of November would be a whole lot better. Anytime earlier November is better.
Okay, all right, that's what I'm looking at.
Yes. Anytime in October, and anytime earlier November.
I'll send, I'll send any mail.
Okay.
We may have two things, one an accessory apartment, and the other one is a administrative appeal.
Anything else? Barbara?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
And I noticed that you did that in your very first meeting.
That's, then that's a reason why she did it so well.
That's why I was...
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.